Podcast is set.
Good evening and welcome to the July 30th, 2020 special meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. Before we begin our meeting, I'd first like to ask everyone to please turn off any wireless devices, devices that you might have to prevent them from interfering with our meeting. This is a special meeting of the Board of Education with one agenda item regarding the school reopening guide that has been developed by Dr. Gosin. Let me first of all say to the public that we are working hard on getting you access to the board in terms of your ability to testify before the board, and it looks like we'll be in a continuing virtual situation. So I'm fully confident by August the 20th, 20th, we will have found a way for the public to do as they've done, interact with the Board of Education. So we are working on that. That is critical to the board. And also I'd like to say, even though we'll do a more of this at our August 20th meeting, I want to welcome the newest member of the Board of Education. We're just excited about her membership on the board, Ms. Nia Jackson. Ms. Jackson, the new student board member, welcome to the Board of Education. She's a student, a senior, rising senior or a senior now at the Oxon Hill High School. We're just so proud of you and look forward to your service on the Board of Education. As I said, the sole purpose of our meeting is to consider the fall 2020 reopening plan. Ms. Ellis, at this point, would you please call the row?
Yes, good evening again. Mrs. Ahmed here. Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows? Ms. Jackson?
Present.
Mr. Montero? Mr. Murray? Ms. Queen?
Right.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Ms. Swan?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
I'm present.
Mrs. Williams?
Present.
And Dr. Thornton?
Present, and thank you very much, Ms. Ellis.
I'm here, Dr. Thornton.
I see our vice chair, Mr. Burrows, is here. Ms. Ellis, would you please?
Yeah.
Murray, I'm here as well.
And Mr. Valentine, and did I hear Mr. Murray?
Yeah, this is Mr. Murray here as well.
Mr. Murray is here also. Okay, thank you.
Montero's here as well, but he's as a servant, so he's trying to get in.
Who's that?
Mr. Montero.
Mr. Montero, okay. All right, very good. Colleagues, if we could, at this point, join together in a moment of silence for Congressman John Lewis. A great warrior of civil rights who helped to get our nation through his third revolution and create the possibilities that you and I now benefit from. So a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, colleagues. At this point, Dr. Gosin, I will turn the floor to you to present your fall reopening plan to the board. And before I do that, let me, let me thank you, Dr. Gosin, you and your team for the excellent work that you've done in developing the plan, which has been received very warmly by all segments of our community. So I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. The work that you all have done in the town hall meetings, interacting with the public at a grand level regarding the plan, that's much appreciated, particularly the meetings with our delegation members as well as the county council. I also want to recognize the work of individual boards of education members. I've noticed the work that you're doing and interacting with your constituencies regarding this. And I think at the end of the day, it's going, it's going to result in once it's finalized, a plan that we can all be very, very proud of. In fact, we think we're all proud of it now. So at this, at this point, Dr. Gosin, I'm turning the floor to you to present your plan, and then colleagues, we will engage in some question and discussion with Dr. Gosin.
I apologize, Dr. Thornton, if we could please have a moment to approve the agenda?
That would be appropriate. A motion is in order.
So move.
So probably move and second it, that the agenda be approved without modification. Those in favor, please say hi.
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 The opposing know. The eyes have it, let the record reflect this unanimous, Ms. King. And now, Dr. Gosin, you may proceed.
Thank you. So Mr. Wilkes is going to assist and will facilitate in the moving of the slides. Before I begin, I want to personally say thank you to all of the members of the Board of Education for your support through this decision-making process, the individual calls that were made to each of you to share next steps and thoughts and really understanding that we could very well have been going out and making a decision before lots of other jurisdictions and one that was different than most others, but trusting the sound, the decisions that we made on how we arrived at the amount of time that we needed to for distance learning. And so I am humbled and honored that you allowed me the opportunity to work with our constituents and our 89-member team to really create a plan that we all could be proud of, but that would keep our students and staff safe while the numbers unfortunately continue to go up. So we will begin now the presentation and a summary of all that we have accomplished and will be able to do for the fall for the upcoming school year. So if you, we started this process early June. One, we used a survey and the results from the survey from parents, students, and teachers and administrators has helped us to craft the plan that you have before you now. The executive leadership team went to the bus lot and elementary, middle, and high school to really walk through what the students would experience from day one if we were in person, all the way till what they, from the time they woke up and got on the bus until they got home, so that we could provide some direction for the committee to review in terms of what we were looking for. We started that process and the survey results we received back in June revealed to us that many of our families wanted us, if we were to return a hybrid structure that would be two days in person and three days of distance learning. Though, as you, as you've seen multiple times in our results, many of our families, staff, meaning teachers and administrators, wanted to move towards distance learning. We used that input, created a stakeholder team, which you'll see who the, at least the positions that they held that were part of that team. I gave them direction to create a plan that would include a hybrid model, the one that our community wanted, which were the two days in person, and then to make some recommendations of how we could move forward as an organization. When I got that plan back around, I want to say July 15th, well, when I got the initial draft back from them, which is earlier than that, their recommendation then was to begin at quarter one with distance learning and two, three, and four would be hybrid. As I shared with many of you all in individual calls during the time that I was supposed to be taking a break at the end of June, I did spend that time talking to other superintendents across the nation, medical practitioners and university presidents, and we talked through what we thought would be happening as related to COVID-19. Us rolling, having students return during the flu season, and then also there was a conversation then, and we're now seeing evidence now that there will be a surge of the virus. We're starting to experience that now. And the uncertainty around the Thanksgiving and winter break and families traveling, receiving others in, and not being able to control the exposure of the virus, hence is how we arrived at the quarter one and two for distance learning. So we had, I had individual conversations with you, talked through what the task force recommended, the committee recommended, shared with you everything that we, I had learned and really wanted to move forward with a plan that will do distance learning from August 31st until January 29th. And I thank you all for understanding and the support in that. We made that release on July 15th and then worked very fast to complete the document with the input from our external committee to create a robust document, which is the one that is posted now. And I'll talk about that document as we go through the presentation. Next slide. It's coming, so the next slide, okay. So I've referenced this already, but we had a committee of a total of 89 people who helped to provide input in the document that you see, and they represent internal members from many of the departments that you see listed here. Next slide, the second slide includes more departments. And then the third slide, this here are the positions of the people who joined from our external committee. And I'm extremely grateful to all of them for their input. They've worked extremely fast in a short period of time. Our plan was honestly, our goal was to roll out a plan and release it the week of August 3rd. But we got fast-tracked on that when elected officials at the national level started a robust conversation about the re-entry of school. And so many states and school districts felt the pressure of having to make a decision sooner rather than later. That was to our advantage because it did provide our parents even more time to fully understand and grapple with what we were recommending for the fall and to make plans and preparations. So even though it caused us to move even faster, I'm grateful for that. Next slide. That committee of 89 were divided into three groups, instruction, school facilities, and student athletics and activities. The instruction committee looked at student schedules, the use of musical instruments and electronic devices, attendance, grading, state and local assessments, and then any changes in administrative procedures that may affect grading or any course availability. The school facilities group, you looked at the use of schools by outside organizations, how we would admit visits, visitors, the cleaning of our facilities, the use of the cafeteria, the physical layout of classrooms, hallway procedures, day-to-day operations, buses, expectations for parents, they were to come and visit before and after care. Our students would need to visit the health room and then schedule through school max. And then the student athletics and activities committee looked at coaches and athletics, extracurricular events, dual enrollment, and how that would impact us in the external universities. We looked at external partners to support our teachers and students, creative arts performances, college access, field trips, virtual, and competitions if it involved crowds. Next slide. The highlights of the plan stated that, as I've shared many times before, we will be on distance learning from August 31st until January 29th, that we will reassess where we are by December 1. And if we are a lot better than where we were July 15th, then we will provide parents an opportunity from December 1 to December 18th to make a decision whether they want to continue with distance learning or move to the hybrid model. The hybrid model would allow us to split our population in half by, based on students' last names. A through J is the first group, and K through Z will be the second group. And we've made provisions if there are members in the household who have different last names, so the guide does go in, it explains that. We would obviously then begin that second semester on February 1. If by chance, on December 1, we're not better than where we are, where we were when we made the decision July 15th in terms of COVID-19 and the exposure rate, then we would then announce the continuation of distance learning. So we did share that information with our community so that they would have some timelines to look forward to. Special education will continue, we'll continue to follow IEPs and 504 plans, and we've built in time to provide support for our English language learners and special education students in small group instruction virtually. Next slide. We also have provided an option for teachers to go to the schoolhouse to work Monday through Friday if they need access to Wi-Fi or if they want to have access to all of their resources. They can get them from the school and bring them home, or they can do it from the worksite. Pre-K through 12 teachers will have their virtual professional development experience from August 20th through August 28th. We just concluded the Principal Summer Leadership Institute, which was Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week, and it too was virtual. Was, I want to give thank you to the Office of Professional Learning and Leadership, used to be known as the Office of Talent Development. They renamed themselves, but they did an amazing job. So I'm looking forward to the virtual experience that our teachers will have August 20th through the 28th. And then August 28th will be a virtual orientation mock day for all schools, all grades. And that was a recommendation that was given to us in one of the telephone town halls, on the community telephone town hall. We thought it was an excellent idea, so we will work to pull that off the morning of Friday, August 28th. We will be working to distribute Chromebooks to our students in grades one through 12. Grades one and two, we have made a, we've put in a purchase to get, to get touchless screens for Chromebooks for our primary grades one and two. We are constant, in constant conversation with Dell and HP because they are in high demand across the nation. And so we're monitoring that order and will continue to monitor for the opening of school. We have already received 25,000 of the laptops that we've put in orders for. We put in total of 50,000 requests. We've gotten half of that so far. I mean, it is our goal to begin the distribution of those right before school begins for those students who are still in need. We did not collect the laptops and the Chromebooks or devices that we distributed in the spring. Many of our students are using it through the summer program, and now they're going to need it for the fall. So we, all the devices we distribute are still, students still have. Next slide. We will offer meals, just like we did this spring, except this time we will offer it at all 206 schools. We wanted to make sure that students could get to a school that is closest to them. You do not have to necessarily attend that school to go to the school to get a meal. So if by chance I happen to be a friendly high school student, but Tiahak Academy is literally around the corner from my home, I can just go to Tiahak to get a meal. Meals will be offered on Monday and Thursday. Monday distribution will be for Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday will be for Thursday, Friday. And we did a similar kind of format in the spring. We did this time as a provision, look to see if there were any homes that were more than one and a half miles away from the school. And I was able to pull up that information, and we have 5,000 homes that are not, that are more than 1.5 miles away. So we will be utilizing our transportation team to assist in delivering meals to the community for those homes that are outside of that 1.5 mile radius. What is different about meals, though, is that the U.S. Department of Agriculture is ending the summer meals program at the end of the summer, and then we will go back to the regular payment of meals. So that means free and reduced meal families will get their meals free or reduced, but those families who typically would have paid for meals will have to pay for them. So we will be requiring that students use their PIN number, because that is the best way to track that in the fall. Next slide. Highlights from student athletics, of course, we have shared around creative and performing arts performances. We have had our community and our teachers and our students did an amazing job doing some pre-recorded or live virtual performances this spring. Their creativity came out, so we're continuing to foster that creativity. So you may be invited to participate and experience in those virtual performances. We will continue with dual enrollment. Prince George's Community College will be going virtual for the fall semester. Bowie State will have freshmen coming in virtual, I mean, coming in person and all other students doing virtual. And so, and University of Maryland is also on a hybrid schedule. So some of our students will be experiencing those dual enrollment classes, not only us virtual, but also those college/university classes virtual as well. Field trips will be conducted virtually, and so we provided some platforms for our teachers to use for virtual field trips. And we are allowing clubs and organizations to continue online as long as they follow our usage, our requirements and guidelines established in our administrative procedure for safety and security. Lastly, athletics, while we're in the distance of learning process, all athletic activities have been canceled. And that is, we are working with the Maryland Public Schools Athletic Association to really make sure that there's consistency across the state around that decision. I have a call every week with a local superintendent in the state, and those that are moving to distance learning are not having athletic events for the fall, just wanting to make sure that our students remain safe. Next slide. We also are providing supports to our students through Zoom, through telehealth. As you know, we have 80 schools that will be opening with mental health providers, and so we'll continue to provide those supports, and most of those schools are community schools. And we are providing that support to parents virtually, not just to parents and students, to the family if needed through these difficult times. Our professional school counselors will be providing social-emotional lessons each week to our elementary students, and that is built into the schedule. And we'll continue to hold student government elections virtually, and there also will be an opportunity to do college visits virtually online. And we've had a couple of colleges who've already signed up and who'll be working with our high schools for that virtual experience. In terms of equity through distance learning, I know that the Board of Education has established an equity policy and guidelines, and we wanted to make sure that we were aligned in our practices with the guidelines of the Board of Education. We will continue with your support, expand internet services to our high-needs areas, provide, as stated earlier, Chromebooks to those families in need or iPads for our younger learners, providing additional support for our English language learners and special education students through small group instruction. We've identified even in the schedule that on Wednesdays will be utilized for small group instruction. Our paraprofessionals this time will assist in doing pull-out sessions as well for small group instruction. We are providing professional development during the week of August 20th through the 28th for, to help our students and teachers with strategies to help youth in social and emotional health. And then the first three weeks of school, we have created what we're calling bridging documents that help to make sure we're closing the academic gap from the spring and the fall, and which transfers over into the fall across the district to make sure that we're beginning the process of closing the academic gap that we potentially could have lost through the use of, during COVID-19. And then lastly, we have created parent support centers that are strategically located throughout Prince George's County that allow parents a place to go to receive additional support. What we learned through the spring is that sometimes parents needed help on how to upload a document so that student work could be turned in, or needed to work through and troubleshoot some of the nuances of Zoom or Google Meet, or needed to print a packet because they didn't have the capacity or capability to do it from their home, or really just needed someone to help talk them through how to manage time with their student while doing work. And so through the support of our parent engagement office, we will have those parent centers that will be open to provide and receive parents throughout the district so that they know that we are here to support them through this process. Next slide. So next steps, we have placed our draft document on our website, and the great thing is, is that it is truly a draft document. That is what most people call a living and breathing document because I've received lots of input from parents this week. We've made revisions based on that input from parents and teachers. We will be making revisions every Friday. So a new document will be posted tomorrow. The new, the additions or changes in that document will be in red so that our community can see what was changed, what was added to the document, and we'll continue to do that until August 14th. August 14th is the date that Maryland State Department of Education has established that all recovery plans must be posted on a local education agency's webpage, website. Then they will use a rubric to go through to score our plans to determine whether all of the plans are consistent with the state requirements. What I will say about this Friday's plan, parents can look forward to, and we've created two now elementary schedules, one for students in grades K to 3, another one for students in grades 4 through 6. We've listened to their input about a balance between virtual live lessons and tape lessons, which are in the guide, known as synchronous or asynchronous lesson. So you'll see a balance of that. We have looked at the timing in terms of the primary grade students to make sure that that one-hour block is shortened and allows for more independent work or small group. Extended break time, so lots of the responses that we received about the concern around the elementary schedule for primary students, and we've made some revisions. So I think our community will be pleased to know that their input was taken into account, and we've made those revisions. And you'll see through the guide, there are other areas where we've added. So for example, there was a section recommended that we include a section for talent and gifted, and so we've included a paragraph there on where parents can go on our own website to follow up for talent and gifted. What's forthcoming and that we're still working through, that will be updated in the guide by the final date, which is August 14th, and that is the date for materials distribution for distance learning. So we will be distributing to parents, there will be some hard copies, our consumables, what we call books or workbooks that students will work in, that we'll need to get to some of our families, and that depends on the grade level and the course, manipulatives, art supplies from schools. So we're working through the logistics of that now. For those families that still need a device, we will work through and have for them the date to pick that up, and the specific directions as it relates to the virtual orientation or mock day, which will be on Friday, August 28th. So that is the Cliff Note version of the 150-page document that can be found on the PGCPS webpage. It is also in French and Spanish. There is also a summary guide that is also in English, French, and Spanish, which is a shortened version of this 150-page document. As stated, we will update it weekly through August 14th. I appreciate the input from our community, and so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gosin, for the presentation. Now, colleagues, we will now have rounds of comments and questions. The first round, as you know, is limited to five minutes, and the second round to three minutes. If you would, raise your hand and I'll recognize you, and I'll recognize first Ms. Williams and then Mr. Valentine. You're on mute, Ms. Williams, thank you.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. First, I'd like to welcome our student board member, Ms. Jackson. I'm excited for her being here. And so, but let me start by saying, and I'm sure my colleagues will agree with my sentiment, that I appreciate your leadership, Dr. Gosin, and the work of your staff since COVID-19 entered the Board of Maryland. Every morning I wake up and work out with Candace Camille, the wellologist, doing a very challenging fitness program, and whenever she gets us into lifting heavy weights or doing these hard exercises, she says, you know, don't stop because it's challenging, you have to make adjustments and keep it moving. And you and your staff adjusted with such grace and professionalism as we were faced with this COVID-19 challenge. You and your, you and your team pivoted on a dime to ensure that the students and staff were safe. With the data and information that we had at the time, you and your staff put together a strategy to continue to provide educational services to the 136,000 students and kept our staff in PGCPS state, safe, better than many across the nation and even some in this region. You all continued to make adjustments as more data and information became available, and although my heart is heavy for the loss of some of our PGCPS family due to the virus, you and your team did a phenomenal job to continue educating our students. You all made adjustments and kept moving to deliver educational services to our students. As we start to look to this new academic school year, this reopening plan, in my mind, proves that when you and your team are faced with challenges, you know how to work together with community partners and pivot. But this is only a plan, a plan that had no template, no framework, no training to prepare you for the challenge COVID-19 continues to bring to us. I and we must recognize that this is a plan, a plan that needs to be flexible and open to adjustments, a plan that is only worth until it is implemented by all the stakeholders doing their part in the midst of this life-threatening circumstance we're living through. Stakeholders like students doing their best to do their work, teachers doing the best to deliver the curriculum, parents to ensure that their students are doing their part, school administrators confirming that the teachers have the resources to do their best, executive staff making sure the resources and support is available to all the schools, and under your lead- And under your leadership and our oversight as the Board of Education collectively, we must in, uh, implement this plan with fidelity. I know this plan of written words will be adjusted to help those that need adjustments because their individual challenges may be different from those in the masses. So I know you will try to make adjustments when someone is faced with a challenge of their own and from their own stakeholder perspective, be it a student, a teacher, a parent, administrator, or staff. We must not allow an individual challenge to tear down this plan that is being implemented for the whole the hundred and thirty-six thousand students and the twenty thousand staff that we continue to employ during this pandemic. I know you will make adjustments within the purview of the requirements handed down by the state for any individual who needs adjustments from their own individual stakeholders perspective. I trust that you and your staff will try to make adjustments to keep moving towards delivering the best educational services available to our Prince George's County Public School students. None of us were trained nor prepared for a global pandemic coupled with the racial unrest. But as leaders of PGCPS, we will continue to strive to reach our primary goal of educating students the best that we can in the midst of these times of chaos and must adjust and miss, and must make adjustments to keep moving when we're faced with challenges. So, Dr. Golson, I want to thank you, your staff, the community partners and the parents who spent the time developing this plan. I think it's, it is put together well and very easy to follow. So I appreciate that. Over the next hundred and eighty days while we're in school, I trust that you will rise to the challenge with this plan and I know you and your team will do the best that you can. And so that, I just wanted to open with that because as I, as I work through the plan and, and try to understand it, I can see the work that you all have put in. And I know that there is room for flexibility and we have to be flexible and support you in that effort. So my, my first question is around.
Ms. Williams, Ms. Williams. Yes, your time has expired.
Well.
You'll, you'll have the three minute, you'll have the three minute round and I'll come back.
That was five minutes already. Okay, thank you.
I have a clock. Uh, Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, uh, very much. Um, I'll just say, um, before MSNBC highlighted you, we knew you were an outstanding leader, Dr. Golson. Um, and I believe you being in this chair, uh, is what people would say for such a time as this. And your leadership has been invaluable, particularly your experience as a parent, uh, a school teacher and a principal. And as people around the country are trying to divide groups, parents from teachers and, um, affluent parents from parents who are working class. I'm glad that in you, we see someone who's a unifying force. So much so, your leadership has been highlighted nationally because there were other school districts who in many ways changed their reopening plan because of our plan. And I've had, I was with a suit, with, uh, speaking with a principal from, um, another school district recently. And he said, you don't get enough credit for being the first superintendent in this region to come out and make a decision that was inclusive. And I don't want to undermine the work of the task force, uh, and those who were on it, the diversity, the discussions. Um, I know, uh, in many ways firsthand, the process of coming up, uh, with the recommendation from that group. And so I definitely want to recognize you, your staff, um, Christian others who, who really took leadership. There are a lot of districts that are opening up and having plans, but no one is anywhere near transparent about how they came up with the plan. And so I thank you for that. I also want to recognize my board colleague Joshua Thomas in particular. Yet last night I had a chance to listen in on a town hall he did on College Park. And I was thoroughly impressed with you, brother, on how well you were able to answer some very, 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 very tough questions. And so I appreciate you as well. Uh, I have, uh, two very quick questions. One being, um, what we learned from the April, May closure. One being there were a number of students who were just not logged in. And I know we want to get to the root of why they weren't, whether it be a device or access to internet or their parents were, uh, were working. And I want to know what are we doing at the district to ensure we get as much participation and students just logging in as possible? The second question is, uh, teacher participation, which came up pretty early on the process, ensuring that teachers were logged in, responding to students, um, that they were putting grades in, uh, and that they were, you know, in the position that many parents expected them to be. And so my two questions would be, what are we doing as a district to ensure, one, that, uh, we're tracking students who are logged in? If not, we're ensuring that they, uh, they, they do get logged in. And two, um, how are we ensuring that those teachers, um, are there where the student and the parents are expecting them to be at the times when they're expected to be? Again, thank you so much to you, my board colleague, Brother Thomas and others on the board who've done similar work in the community to ensure that we represent, um, the model for how schools should reopen, uh, under this COVID nineteen. Thank you so much.
Dr. Golson, before, before you respond, colleagues, remember that your, your, um, questions and responses is five minutes. So in any preamble or, uh, comments you might want to make, uh, you're limiting Dr. Golson's time to respond. So keep that in mind as we go forward. Go, go ahead, Dr. Golson.
Thank you, but my time, it starts now, right?
Uh, it's, it's five minutes with, between you and Mr. Valentine.
Okay, got it. All right. So the first question, actually it's, um, what we call in our recovery guide disconnected youth. Um, and we are using our, um, nonprofit partners to assist in helping to literally go to the homes of those students who are disconnected. Um, to make sure that we find out what's going on in the family. Is it a technology issue? Is it really that they're falling behind because of content? Um, is it that they are the ones in the home that are kind of serving as the person monitoring their sibling? And so, um, one of our, we've had several of our partners and our community school coordinators who assisted in doing that in the spring. And we will be doing that again. I just had a meeting with our nonprofit partners today and reached out to them again to ask for their assistance in helping with, um, connecting to those, uh, what we're calling disconnected youth. In addition though, because we're moving to one-to-one, it will help us a whole lot more. Um, because through the use of technology, we're able to see who's signing on at what time, how long they've been on the system, signed on, what work they've done, and even when we're not in school, if they've signed on after school. So maybe a child was not connected during the day, but has used our device to sign on to do something else in the evening. We can actually now monitor that with one-to-one. In the spring, we were using, um, enrichment packets. We had lessons on the television and we did laptop distribution. Um, so it was extremely difficult, even though we still are able to identify them. We now can find them more with the use of technology. So we'll be a, a lot more efficient on that. The second question around the teacher accountability piece, um, during our summer leadership institute, um, that just took place Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, we created a look-for document, a document that teachers, principals and assistant principals can use to really monitor instruction from a virtual perspective. The look-for document they had before was the in-person experience. So we've adapted it for that piece of it. And assistant principals and principals are going to get the logins for all of the teacher sessions and expect it to go into those sessions, not to interrupt the delivery of instructions because we don't want to mess up the flow of the teacher. But to then provide feedback and make sure that they are delivering those lessons. Um, we know that we were able to, as board member, um, Williams said, we turned on a dime quickly to deliver a distance learning model, but we learned so much from the spring that I think our families and our teachers are ready, ready for a different challenge for the fall. And you'll see the teachers will be online because they're more comfortable about it and they'll be using a variety of tools this time to help to keep students engaged.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, I have, um, Ms. Jackson next, Ms. Ahmed, and Mr. Wallace may come back. And then I'll recognize Ms. Moses Struthers, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Queen. Um, Ms. Jackson.
Uh, good evening, everybody, and, um, good evening to Dr. Golson. Um, I just have two quick questions. Um, the first one being that in the sample schedule provided, you set aside Wednesdays as, um, times for academic interventions and, and small group instruction if a student needs assistance. And I was just wondering if, um, instruction in classes in general, we would be taking place at all for students that, you know, may not need intervention or may not, um, need additional assistance from their teacher.
Yep. So at the secondary level, and first let me just say welcome, Ms. Jackson. It's great to get questions from our new student member of the board. So welcome. Um, at the secondary level, even at the elementary, um, what will happen is, is that, um, teachers will say they can invite you into a virtual experience to say, hey, if you need assistance on the content that was shared on Monday and Tuesday, you can come in at this time to get support. You'll be a lot more, it'll be a lot easier to do at the secondary level because students are able to log on without a parent. At the elementary primary grades, that's going to have to be a lot more structured. But on that Wednesday, it could be that in your AP, um, environmental science class that you do need that extra thirty-minute support and it might be you and three other people who come into your AP, um, environmental science teachers class from nine to nine-thirty. It could be that when you go in that time, it's just you and that's okay. Um, so we want to provide an opportunity that we don't get so far in the content that you have not had an opportunity to get some help in order to complete the work. The reason it's strategically placed on Wednesday is because the secondary level, you'll have like the Monday is a A day, Tuesday is a B day. So if you've been assigned work before you have to complete it, if you need help, you have that Wednesday to help you to get that work completed. So that when you go back into class on Thursday or Friday, you've gotten that assistance for help.
Thank you. And, um, my second question being, I know that the buildings are, um, closed to the public for the most part and, and, and third-party usage. I was just wondering, um, has any consideration been made to, um, standardized testing such as the SAT and ACT where those tests, um, those tests are often held in our school building?
Yeah. So actually we're having a discussion for, about that, um, in our superintendent group on Friday. I looked at the number of students who were enrolled for SAT, ACT for our sites. Um, so they did an enrollment piece, I guess around April or May for this administration, be thinking that we would be out of this. Um, the numbers were up to two fifty, so they put a max on it. All of them were maxed out. Um, our concern when we saw it was, would we be able to get enough monitors where you could only have around five to six students in a classroom? Um, and when the college board was not able to answer whether we could get monitors, basically they left it up to every school system who will hold it to figure out if they could get monitors. That was not a sufficient, sufficient response for me. Um, and so we are having that conversation on Friday with other superintendents to have a conversation about what, what can we do as a state to figure out ways to get support, different support from the college board? What I will say though is the university, University of Maryland System of School Colleges has decided not to use SAT, ACT for admittance in their admissions process for the fall of twenty twenty-one. So the desire and need to take the assessment so quickly, um, might be changed across the US. I can tell you from Maryland, it has. There's also a list of universities that grows every year that do not use SAT, ACT for college admittance. What they do use is GPA. Um, and that is also one of the reasons we're moving to a grading system, not the paths failed like we did in the spring. Because I do want to make sure that students, when they leave, have grades and are able to apply to universities so that they can get in without necessarily having to have the SAT or ACT scores.
Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Jackson. Uh, Ms. Ahmed.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, Dr. Golson, I, I want to say that I am very much in support of starting our school year off with distance learning. Um, I think it's just, it's simply the most responsible thing to do. And so I appreciate that that is at the crux of this plan. Um, and I also appreciate your team spending time to answer my pages of questions, uh, about the plan. Um, and for folks, uh, uh, it is publicly posted on Board Ducks as well. So thank you for board staff for putting it up there so folks can have the answers, uh, to the questions that were at least in my brain and hopefully, um, in yours as well. I wanted to take some of my time, uh, today to kind of maybe clarify some of the misconceptions about the plan. And so that's kind of the way my line of questioning will be for the next couple of minutes. And so, um, one of those things that I was really concerned about was that tech glitches would negatively affect attendance rates and grading. So if someone is having some type of tech issue, um, that's gonna, may affect their attendance or, or their grade. Um, could you address that? Will students be penalized for any type of tech issues that occur?
No, that was one of the questions and, and our community can see it in that list. I'm, I answered all those questions this morning because I eat, sleep and breathe this guy, breathe this guy. So I could tell you probably pages that you find it on. Um, no, technology, you will not be penalized. So for example, um, it has happened to some of us, some of our staff where you think you're on and next thing you know, the computer has crashed. It's not your fault. And you reach out and you say, hey, I'm off because I can't get on or something that's happened. Once you communicate with us that, hey, once this happens, we will either send you to a distribution site, our technology distribution center to get another one, or you can go to the parent support center where we can help and give you some support. Once we know, then we're here to help. So now technology, a technical issue is not going to stop you from being counted as present or penalized. Once we get you what you need so you can get back up and running, um, you can communicate with your teachers and then we'll make adjustments. I think that's really what part of the speech was that Ms. Williams gave. We all have to be flexible.
Thank you. And I, from my end, I was very concerned about kind of us keeping up certain standards when it comes to, uh, grading and attendance. I feel like some things could be more relaxed to allow for the type of technical shift and also the lifestyle change that most folks are going through. Um, but it's my understanding that a lot of, uh, the requirements that we have in place currently, uh, when it comes to attendance and grading are dictated by state guidelines. Is that correct?
That is accurate. So all local education agencies in the state of Maryland will be taking attendance. Um, we did receive, um, a guideline document from MSD and we use that to establish how we would do it. We have been allowed to revise our administrative procedures to allow distance learning to serve as present. Because initially that would not have been. So we will be able to make that modification.
Okay. Um, also, any student that needs one-to-one technology will be able to get one-to-one technology, correct?
Correct. So as I stated earlier today, we distributed sixty thousand. We haven't collected those. We've ordered fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand devices have come in. The only situation where we wouldn't is if we're on backorder, you know, once again, across the nation, as you can see, it's turned into a ripple effect. Um, everyone now is moving to virtual, not everyone, but lots of areas are moving to virtual and now are moving quickly to get devices. I'm grateful. We started quickly. Uh, we made that first purchase before July one. Um, just because we wanted to move to distance, to a one-to-one environment, regardless of whether we were going to be hybrid or not.
Okay. And I think my last thing is not necessarily a clarification, but just kind of my vision for the future. And, um, you've read it. It was kind of like three paragraphs of me talking about how I think we should take this time to allow for some of our, um, students to pursue higher level, higher, high school level students to pursue online education for the entire year with qualified faculty that, where they can take any AP that they may want to take, have niche electives that they want to take, uh, basically like a University of Maryland Global Campus for PGCPS. Um, I think that's the time to, it now is a time to be able to reimagine what virtual education could look like, uh, and as a long-term um, for our district. And so my question to you is, what types of conversations have been going on regarding that?
Uh, um, we'll definitely send you, uh, my opening conversation with principals on two, Monday that was taped. We'll share it with you. And that I did share with, um, our leadership that we have to reimagine Prince George's County and that we have to step up to play, step up to the plate. I'm grateful that you all approved a evening school plan where we were already going one-to-one and providing an experience for all students at their high school, thus the high school that they're assigned. So we already pulled, ripped the Band-Aid off, um, in changing that dynamic. And once again, we have forty thousand students in summer school. Uh, a thousand of those students are taking courses or for original credit, which means they're taking those courses to accelerate. Um, and so I did share with our principals, we're going to have to, I think the fall of twenty twenty-one will look totally different than what we thought it would look like. I think we will have in-person experiences, but there will be some families who say, I want to learn virtually and we'll have to have that as an option.
Thank you, Dr. Golson and, uh, Ms. Ahmed. Uh, and I'll now call on Mr. Thomas. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. Chair. And I want to, uh, just begin by, um, echoing my colleagues. Thank you very much for all of your hard work, Dr. Golson. I want to get as much of my five minutes as I can, so I'm going to keep it right there. All right. So, uh, number one, question number one, um, if you could just, uh, this is a question for clarification for the public. Um, if you could just. If you could just help folks understand the August 14 date that you will be submitting this plan to MSD. So just for clarity, this plan can continue to be adjusted and amended all the way up until that date, correct?
As stated in my presentation, the document is updated every Friday. The changes in the document will be highlighted in red so that it will be easier for parents to find the new information since it is a 150-page document. It will be updated every week until August 14. All local education agencies are required to have their recovery plans posted by the 14th for Maryland State Department of Education to review, analyze, and provide feedback. That is why it has to be final by that date.
Great, thank you. I just want to make sure, I've gotten a lot of questions about that date in particular, and what changes can be made before and after, okay? The second question that I have is in relation to the, the live virtual lessons that will be taking place on Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays. And I've received a lot of feedback from parents, community members around having the, the choice to be able to have it as a, a, a option for a homeschool format. Let's say that a parent isn't able to support their child during that live instruction block during the day, but they want to be present and be a part of that learning. I understand that we, you know, are trying to move forward with a uniform model, but is there any possibility that at some point there can be some kind of an option where instead of participating in, or being, being expected to participate in live instruction throughout the day, where parents and students might be able to have the choice to, to participate in, in recorded instruction, and that still be permissible?
So in the guide, it states underneath each chart that we are strongly encouraging our teachers to record their lessons. And I will be sharing that same conversation with our teachers in the August 20th. I'll be doing an opening for teachers on August 20 and sharing with them why it's important to take that. Contractually, in order to require it, I'd have to go back and change the negotiated agreement. That's why it's strongly encouraged. There are benefits of recording it. One, it allows the student, even if they are present, to be able to go back to the lesson if they did not understand some content in order to go back and hear it again. And it helps the student, if a student is absent and need to go back and look at that lesson. We are providing professional development to our teachers to understand it's more than just clicking the record button. You do have to know how to upload it in order for people to access it. So we will be training them on how to do that. We have, in the revision that you'll see in the elementary schedule, done a balance of live and tape lessons that parents ask for in the email responses that I received, and you'll see that in the guide tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you. And just for clarity, I, I do know that this is part of the plan. I'm just asking because these are the questions that have come the most into my inbox, and I want to make sure that the public knows that these are things that we are looking at and addressing. Next question I have is thinking about, you know, while I know your team has put together a pretty well-thought-out plan, we still know that there are going to be hiccups as the year begins. There are going to be ways in which we may need to pivot and adjust. So I'm just curious, does administration have a plan on gathering maybe via a survey, you know, in, in real time, within the first two, three weeks of instruction to gather what parents, students, and teachers, and staff members' experiences are so that pivots can be made in rapid real time as opposed to a long waiting period?
Yep, I have 206 amazing principals who'll be able to gauge their community and what's happening in the classrooms to make pivots and changes immediately. They do that already. They do that at the very beginning of school, and we don't necessarily publish it in a guide. But then there also will be assessments done, and it's in our guide under the assessment section that talks about us continuing to collect data on our distance learning program so that we can make revisions systemically. So there'll be some school changes that may need to be made, like something may change at Avalon Elementary, but that may not need to change at University Park. You know, that, our principals are charged, the CLOs, to make those changes and pivots as necessary. But then there will be some that affect everyone that will need to make changes systemically, and we'll do that. We did that well in the spring, and we'll do it again this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas and Dr. Goldson. And I'll now move to Ms. Goldson Struthers.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Goldson, and to the, I guess we've been calling them the team of 100 or maybe 89, as you said, that worked on this plan since you announced before the, the guide was public, your transparency and your inclusion of the voice of the students, parents, teachers to this plan has been just incredible. And I, I know that the community members really appreciate those opportunities with the telephone calls to, to speak to you directly. And of course, your incredible, you know, time you commit to the personal email responses. So everyone feels heard and valued, and, and I just want to thank you for, for taking that time. I've clearly heard some, you know, that you've addressed elementary-level parent concerns and that there'll be some new information coming out on Friday. So I, you know, I think we're all going to wait for that and, and provide any more additional feedback. So a couple of questions I have, and I want to thank my, my colleagues for some of their questions that, that addressed some things I wanted to bring forward. One, one thing I noted in the plan is the special education guide that will be developed. Is there a timeline on that?
Yeah, actually, we do have a timeline, and we're doing a special education virtual meeting for parents as well. And I can publish it, actually, I will say the
August 20th.
Direct, what, what date is it?
August 20th will be the special education.
Thank you. Great, thank you. We'd already established that probably about a month ago, so thank you for that, Mr. Rose. So there'll be a virtual meeting for special education parents, and we've asked that a lot of the information that will be held in that virtual meeting will be included in the guide. So our goal is to do the virtual meeting and then to release the guide as well.
Okay, great. So you'll, you'll have some additional feedback before publication. Thank you. So one thing, you know, each of the, you know, schools had to respond in crisis during the fourth quarter and had to either quickly develop communications and school, school systems to keep their school communities together and communicating. As we move forward, is, is there, have you issued sort of like a required level of communication within each building, such as if an elementary school wasn't using ClassDojo or another, another means of that sort of community conversation and community connection, especially directly to teachers? Is there sort of a, a standard you've set around communications?
We actually had a communication session in the Summer Leader Institute for all of our principals on Tuesday. Well-received. We gave exemplars of newsletters, Facebook pages, Twitter accounts, Instagram of people who are doing great things already in our district and what our minimum requirement is for those, the types, the age groups that each of those platforms have, what they should include in their newsletters, where they should position it if they really want it to be read. We shared all of that in the virtual learning experience for communications with our principals. So I think our community will see a more robust communication coming from our schools.
Okay, great, thank you. So I think I have time for one more question focusing on how the PTAs and parents can connect, and I appreciate some of the recommendations and models that were already in the guide. There's some, definitely some interest in using our outdoor space in a safe way to gather, presuming that we don't have stay-at-home mandates. And I wanted to hear from you if, if there will be some recommendations around use of the grounds and safe use. I think the summer has shown a couple of things. One, we are learning how to be safer in outdoor environments and how to, in small gatherings and not spread COVID. And the other is just the, the need to diminish social isolation, and we know the impact that's having on our, our children and our, and our parents. So I wanted to hear your thoughts about, you know, where, what you might recommend about the, the outdoor space of our building.
Yeah, the summer has also revealed to us that people have also abused our spaces.
Yes.
Outdoor use. When we have authorized any, yeah, any use of our facilities and are not opening that up until August 31st. So I caution us to create those environments and us to be the one who is now creating places where people do not adhere to the social distancing or wearing mask provisions that have been required by the state and by the county. What we will do is open up our facility use module August 31st. But we're starting first with auditoriums, large spaces, and only doing Saturday and Sunday first. And not outdoor facilities for people to use until we know that even our own facility use process is allowing and not creating situations where people are not adhering to the guidelines.
Thank you, Dr. Goldson and Ms. Goldson Struthers. And I'll now call on Ms. Queen.
Sorry. Thank you for the time. I just want to say, really, what Sonia said in her first opening speech, thank you guys so very much for the awesome job you have done and what everybody else has said. Dr. Goldson, you actually have been a great leader, so we cannot emphasize that enough, that we're very proud of you, and I'm actually very proud to be a part of the board at this time when you're actually using great leadership and great wisdom, you and the county executive. And to our staff, I don't want to forget the staff and the teachers. And I also want to actually say to our parents also, because at a time like this, the parents and the students and the community are adjusting too. And it takes each and every one of us to work together to make this work, and it is all of you guys. And I just want to say thank you to everybody, not just to us as a board of Prince George's County Public Schools, but I also want to say thank you to the community and to the parents for understanding that at a time like this, you have to think outside the dots. You have to be willing to actually just do something different, and this is going to be something different for all of us, but it is definitely getting us to 21st century learning. So my question is, was something that everybody else had not asked about, but is very important to my kids, it's about lunch, okay? So I actually did lunch with the kids over the summer, and some of these lunches were good and some of them were not. So how is lunch going to be this summer? I've actually visited a lot of schools. I know some schools do lunch a certain way, some do it different. Are we going to be constant with the meals, and are the meals going to be something that everyone wants to eat? Because I know you said they can go to different schools, but I can tell you, John Bayne don't say the same thing walk a meal. So my grandbaby will make me drive all the way to John Bayne to her elementary school because she wants the better meal. So how is really lunch going to be done?
Thank you for that question. Just so you know, the meals do vary by level. So you can pull on our website what's offered at elementary, what's offered at middle, and what's offered at high. USDA, U.S. Department of Agriculture, does allow some fluctuation and changes in different levels. And so that is why you'll see a menu that's different based on elementary, middle, and high. That still will be the same. We still will adhere to that. Will there be the options that many of our kids want, which are Chick-fil-A, McDonald's, Wendy's? No. These are healthy meals that we are required to provide, a vegetable, a grain, a dairy product, all those components that were required in order to make it a reimbursable meal will still be in that lunch offering. And once again, what is different for the fall is if you're not a friend-reduced meal student, you would have to pay for that meal. So yes, it is a lot cheaper than a Lunchable, and a lot more healthier than a Lunchable. But at the same time, will students want to leave the comforts of their home to walk to their nearby school to get that meal? That is a conversation they'll have to have with their family and how they tend to, how they'll make adjustments for that.
Thank you so very much. It's very important to know that because my grandbaby was elementary school and she didn't like the middle school, I had to drive up to the elementary school. So I want people to know, it is different from elementary school, middle school, to high, depending on your child. So it's very important that they realize that each child may want something different. My next question real quick is about the evening school. Because I, it was a lot of pages. Unfortunately, I don't have a printer yet, Dr. Thornton. I'm going to throw that out there, out on the board meeting, so I couldn't print it out to look at the pages. But I couldn't find information about evening school on here. So how's that done?
Thank you so much. The evening school was not included for the reopening guide. This was just for the traditional regular seven and a half day, or six hour for a student day. So we do not include in the guide evening. So we will make sure that when we begin the evening school, right before we begin the evening school registration process, we will make sure you see the pamphlet for evening school and before it's published. Yeah, it's not in because it's not part of the regular day program.
Okay, so as was said before, because I've been pushing this since I've been a member of the board, that we got to think outside the box when it comes to learning. That's why I was really a push for evening school and definitely a push for, as Ms. Rahila just said, online learning. We, we got to realize that people learn this different. And now that we're actually having an issue with COVID, when we realize, and I, and I want parents to listen to this really well, a lot of you guys are working from home, so your kids need to learn to work from home also, because guess what? That may be their job, and now they're getting that experience through school. We have to think different. So I just want us to realize that society will never be the same. So it may be more jobs now where you're working at home. So now, as a school system, we may have to train the kids to say, hey, you have to know how to, to do your work and how to work at home and concentrate. So I just wanted to add that. So it's very important that we, you know, definitely get evening school in it, but actually make sure we get this working at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Queen and Dr. Goldson. And I'll, I'll now call on Mr. Wallace, Mr. Swan, and Ms. Shepherd in, in that order. Mr. Wallace.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton, and thank you, Dr. Goldson and your team, for a very thorough presentation and plan to the community. I'll only use my first round. But I first want to start by asking just a clarification on the parent centers that'll be in the community. Two, twofold question. Do we know those locations yet? And did I hear you correctly that parents will have access to printers at those sites if they do not have printers in their homes?
Yes, we have identified the locations of those sites. They can be found in the parent section, which begins on page 134. Those sites have been identified. And yes, it is for school use. It's not to print flyers for business, but if you need to print some workout for your students, we're here to assist.
Thank you so much for that. My second question.
On page 135 in the guide.
135, thank you so much. Regarding partnerships, I know you and I had a conversation briefly, maybe a week and a half ago, regarding any supports that either the board can advocate for, the school system can reach into our, our partnerships in the county government, state government, or private sector around supports for those workers who do not have the luxury of working from home, those, I'm sorry, those parents who do not have the luxury of working from home, who have been deemed essential and must go into a place of work, but also have to leave that, their house and perhaps leave their first grader alone to do three hours, five hours, six hours of work. Are we still engaging with our partners for daycare, for an after-care providers that can now expand to daycare? Have we engaged those providers on a much deeper level?
Thank you for that question. This is the one piece that still kept me up at night, even after we released our plan and even what we were going to do for distance learning. We will have a plan that will be able to support some, some of our families, up to about 800 seats. And we'll release that information. Our goal is to have it, everything worked through by August 12th. As well as if now many of our after-school programs are starting to repurpose their function. I've seen two now, organizations where they're calling them distance learning centers and are converting their programs to programs that parents can pay a small fee and have their students and be there during the day while they're on their computer. So a typical, let me just give an example. I won't call out names because then folks will be like, why you call my name, my business out? But for example, maybe a karate program that might have been offered in the evening is now turning into a center. Or maybe someone that offered gymnastics or they did tutoring in the evening now is creating learning centers. I did that without calling names, but we're trying to also compile that information too, so we can put it in a location where parents can easily access it. So I want to thank those businesses and community members for starting to create opportunities such as those to help our families.
Thank you. And two more before I get off. I just wanted to be clear as it relates to not only athletics or interscholastic athletics, but Um, I just wanted to be clear as it relates to not only athletics or interscholastic athletics, but also extracurricular activities. Um, I know that the state of Maryland um has some guidance on the, I don't know, I don't know if the right word is canceling of fall and winter sports or postponement. I know there's been a big push and pushback, I guess, na- nationally on the canceling of some fall sports of high school and college. Um, and pushing them back to the spring semester. Um, but I I I do understand that we're going to follow the state's guidance um as it relates to most of those sports. But has there been any discussion uh of just doing county-based athletics um that would have been scheduled in the fall and the winter in the springtime, in the uh, hopefully, the fortunate case that this pandemic has died down in the spring? And as it relates to extracurricular activities, I know in our conversation last week uh that many of the extracurricular activities and clubs on our secondary level primarily.
Mr. Wallace, you're going to, Mr. Wallace, your time is going to expire. Your time is going to expire, so you might want to give Dr. Golson a chance to answer.
Uh, and thank you for that guidance. Uh, the extracurricular activities um that maybe our teachers may have gotten emoluments for. Could you give some verbal guidance to our educators who were sponsors of clubs and any guidance of postponing fall and winter sports to the spring?
Yep. So guidance for clubs can be found in our guide under student activities. So because we had limited time, I don't want to waste going into that, but they are allowed to as long as they adhere to the administrative procedures and guidelines around uh making sure parents got permission for them to do it virtually. And the code has been given to principals and assistant principals so that they can monitor it as well. Um, and those clubs will still get that emolument and meet a certain number of times in order to get that. Um, the first, the question around athletics, I did ask that question as we, before we even started um our guide to um the state association around whether we could postpone, and I was told that was not an option. What I will do say though is that we now have a meeting with the um person in charge of the state athletic association. And that meeting is scheduled for tomorrow morning at eight AM. So anything could happen.
Thank you. And Mr. Wallace, I will call on you first in the three minutes so you can continue at that point.
Oh, no, Mr. Chair, I'm done. Thank you so much.
Oh, okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Swan.
I thank you, Dr. Thornton. Um, first, let me say, uh, first, uh, welcome, Ms. Jackson and well. I also want to, um, great to see you again and and look forward to working with you. Um, also, Dr. Golson Kent, I'm just echo everybody's comment, couldn't be prouder. Like, I I'm just ecstatic that you're our CEO and just the things that you're doing and your team and the staff and the culture. Um, I think that that we are really setting forth, um, not just for Prince George's County, but for the state. That is awesome. So I'm just jumping to my question because I know the clock is going to just eat me up. Um, really quick, on parent centers, um, I noticed that there in the guide, is there a number that parents can call or email or connect virtually to these centers during these times versus having to go directly?
We actually were in discussion about that today. Um, we're working through a parent hotline. Um, so we're still working through it. We're hoping to have that ready and published um by the last date that we got to have it by the fourteenth. But we are working through that. Um, we just talked about it.
Okay, awesome, awesome. Um, also want to talk a little bit about um grading flexibility. Um, I've also got, uh, as I'm sure we all have comments from our constituents and parents and as a parent myself, um, having to work full-time and manage uh my two sons' schedule. Um, what is the flexibility around grading work when um um our schedules across the board, right, are are thrown mixed up and parents may not be able to um sit down and do homework like we used to do? And we had a set time because our work schedules have changed. And and if we got to help during the day, we sometimes have to compensate work in the afternoon and evening. And so, you know, you throw in dinner and that that it just becomes like, where do you have time for homework? What's the flexibility um that parents will get or teachers will be able to give to turn in work? Maybe um in in um, give parents more time, maybe over the weekend, um, so that their parents um can utilize um, you know, flexibility in the schedule?
Yeah, so first, congratulations that you get to have dinner. It comes late for me, but I just want to include that we have, um, and we've stated in the guide that we're revising the weight so that one classic homework and assessments are now weighted equally so that one doesn't outweigh the others.
Okay.
Well, we, many times, um, our teachers were very flexible this spring, but we'll be asking them to do the same. The other thing that um I've gotten feedback on that parents seem to believe help was to have a timeframe to allow students the opportunity to make up work. Um, we did it um at the end of the spring semester. We had a week. The timing of it was probably not the best because it was right before grades were due. So it created a situation where teachers had a lot of work that they had to grade. And when we published it, kids said, oh, I'm not going to do anything until it's time for me to make up the work at the end because I know I have this week to make it up. So we have to, you know, it's a balance that if parents are having a difficult time or their child is having a difficult time, we've got to know it. That child's teacher has to know it. And they can't know it the week that grades are due.
Yeah.
They have to know it when you're experiencing it. So, you know, during that week, if you've had a bad week and and the schedule was just as hectic as you described it, which it could very well be, it will be. You've got to reach out to the teacher and say, hey, we've had a crazy week in the house. Can I get an extra week to get this work done? And teachers are human. They have kids too. They are going to be flexible. But what you can't do is have had that experience the first week of September and not say anything, anything to the teacher until the last week of October.
Right, no, absolutely, absolutely. Let me just jump in and and thank you for that. Um, in the guide, it mentions um some online software, iReady, Dreambox. Is that accessible to all um teachers? Or is that, you know, I know in the past only certain schools or certain grade levels had access to those online softwares, software that teachers can use um to 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 give instruction. Is that available across the district now?
So some of those are not necessarily available to everyone across the district because a high school doesn't need a iReady or Dreambox. So they're grade level appropriate. And we've also made purchases so that we can provide more access. One of the requests, I think, from you all was to have it so that parents could use it in the summer. We will have enough licenses for them to use that software in the summer. But what's inclusive in the guide is not always software that can be used K twelve.
Right. Well, we're grade appropriate. So if it's grade appropriate for thir- third grade, all third graders can use it across the district. Is that right?
We will be making purchases so that they can.
Okay, awesome. And and then on meals, obviously, there's a lot changed, changing in economy, jobs. Parents um may maybe going through um a really hard times and their economic situation has changed um for free and reduced lunches. And since what is the process? I've got five seconds. I just want to tell, what is the process for parents to 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 update their status so that they can get the free or reduced lunch when that starts?
It's an online application. It's done every year. Um, deadline is the end of October. So immediately once, and it goes live in September, once it goes live, we'll do robo-call, put on Facebook everywhere so that those parents can apply. And for those who had it the previous year, they do not have to update their application until that deadline in October. So theirs carries over from one year to the next. It's for those who were not the year before. It's an online process.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Golson and Mr. Swan. I'll now call on Ms. Shepherd. Well, this round is, then I will start on round three. Ms. Shepherd.
Good evening. I just want to say, echo the sentiments of everybody. I want to say, you know, Dr. Golson, thank you and your team for working so diligent to ensure that our students continue to learn um and making sure that they're eating, um, which is so important for them to be able to get up and log on into the computer. Um, and thank you for developing a plan for the disconnected youth. They're so close to my heart because they get disconnected because they have challenges that they cannot figure out how to fix them. So I am very grateful that you guys are thinking about them and if there's a plan to make sure that we can assist them. Um, Ms. Jackson, also welcome to the board. I look forward to working with you. Um, and so my question is, I know that you have the, the, the parent uh site, the centers. Are those, in those parent site uh centers, are there also going to be trained uh trainings for parents to be able to navigate the whole different platforms of, in terms of IT?
Yes, so they won't necessarily have to go to the center to be trained on the platform. What we do, what we do want to make sure is that we once again are practicing um having the appropriate numbers of people at sites. Um, we are planning to do some virtual workshops um that will allow people to fully understand those flat platforms that'll be coming from our parent engagement community. But those sites will help for some of that one-on-one, and that's the feedback that we got from parents and the response. We were able to provide some of those webinars and and tools on how to get on. It's that one-on-one support and they, they'll be able to get that there.
And that leads to my second question about the IT department. Would the IT department have a hotline where they're going to be available to address any issues that comes with one password on your email not working, you're, you're not being able to log on into Zoom? Um, how would that be addressed?
Yeah, so each school has a technology person that can help to guide them through some of those basic ones. Um, but we also talked about using that same parent line that we could use for technology. Our help desk now, um, staff are being able to answer that remotely. Um, so we're hoping that through the traditional hotline, through the new hotline, through the parent centers um and through folks calling school directly to get support, we'll be able to help troubleshoot them. Um, but that's also why we're doing the MOC orientation day on that Friday before school opens so that parents will have a practice and opportunity to use the platform before they get on so they can work through it. Um, with many of the interviews I do, there's always a time where we do a practice to get on first. Um, and so you can't wait till the last minute um because anything technology-wise can happen.
Ye- yes, absolutely.
We're here to support.
And I, as a parent, I had a a kindergarten student, I got to tell you that I faced so much challenge in terms of um getting her email set up and then a password because Dave was already set up for her, so we couldn't figure out who had the password. So I just want to make sure that we keep in mind all those students who are coming new to the school system. They're going to have to get their email addresses, the passwords and things like that, so they will be able to log on. Um, and then.
Thanks.
Yes, and then the other thing that I wanted to see, what would be the plan or process for computers that would break? God forbid an accident happen, the Jews, you know, our students, yeah.
Yep, they will. As shared before, um, what will happen is, is that if something breaks, not because you took it and threw it against the wall because you were mad. Um, but if it breaks, you're to take it to your school, your base school, your base school will go in. Because we have something called asset management. We have, we know every device is assigned. We'll take that asset out and we'll assign you another one. But we will be noticing if you keep breaking every week.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, but then you know there are things that happen. Sometimes the the uh charger is not working, it's not the computer, but it's the charger and little things will prevent them from logging in. Uh, my last question would be, um, would I, would, will we have bilingual people available in this parent sites to be able to translate for our our parents that don't speak English?
Yep, we will. We already had this. We, it, we, it's just, we have a weekly call on Thursdays around COVID nineteen and reopening, and we just discussed that. And um who's staffing it is our parent engagement office, and they have staff that are.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shepherd and Dr. Golson. Um, now colleagues, I'll call on um Ms. Williams for the three-minute round and Mr. Thomas and Ms. Jackson. Please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate all of the questions that were asked, because some of them were on my list. Uh, we might need a round three, Dr. Thornton.
No, we have two rounds.
But um, my first question is because, you know, education is is continuing. We're going to have kids that are transitioning from elementary to middle, middle to high. And typically, we have the period in which the students are uh applying for specialty programs. What are your plans for those specialty programs, in particular, the PSAT eight?
Yep, so we still are going to have a a specialty program, virtual open house. Um, we are working through now, trying to figure out what that assessment will be and how we can administer that. Because obviously, um, we cannot have that in person. And we tested all juniors for SAT and we tested all eighth graders um for PSAT. Um, we do now have a new um testing platform um that is amazing. Our principals were trained on it um Monday. Um, and it will help to inform our delivery of instruction. But now we have to work out what that assessment is um in order for our specialty program. So we're working through that.
So that's a work in progress. That's good to know. Um, they, with uh COVID nineteen hitting us really hard, a lot of it was because of um underlying health conditions, in particular obesity. Um, what is the plan for physical fitness um for students?
I I want to um just give a kudos to our physical education teachers. Many of them were able to still hold um their PE classes where kids were being very active in their home. Um, so parents, please bear with us. We're going to pray that they'll move the coffee table and still uh get that piece in. Um, but we've also included in the guide around, you know, parents fostering an opportunity for kids to go outdoors themselves as well to help foster, um, making sure that our students remain healthy. Um, and getting up from the computer multiple times uh instead of being in front of it all day like I have been myself. Uh, so we are continuing to do that. We will have that again. Um, and that really comes revolves around what um Boozer Struther was asking. And it was, could PTSDs kind of foster an opportunity to go to schools to help to create those environments where kids can have an outlet? And we're open to that. It has to be worked out, you know, with the principal and the facility.
One of the other challenges that we're having um in society with everyone being at home is domestic violence. Is there?
Very brief because Dr. Golson needs a chance to answer.
Um, so my question is around, what are we doing with that? And and is it a, what is the requirement around students having their camera on uh during class?
Yeah, so um excellent question. We do have a one-page that we're providing the teachers again for signs to look for for child abuse. And one of those is a child who does not um log in or have their picture up constantly. Um, that is why the support of our nonprofits going to the homes and checking to make sure that they're okay and to see what's going on is so beneficial. Um, and we do, we, you don't have to keep the camera on, but we do need to see the child just to make sure that we know that they're okay. So let's say that today they don't have the camera on and then they come on on tomorrow and they don't have it on again. That's a red flag that something's going on. Um, are they just cutting on the computer and walking away from it? And so those are things that our teachers will have to be in tune with and then using our non-classroom-based support to really reach out and find out what's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Williams and Dr. Golson. Uh, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Jackson, I think they'll exhaust that. I missed this one. Ms. Mr. Thomas.
Thank you. I want to go back to the question I had before around just um adjusting real time in in taking feedback. Dr. Golson, you mentioned school leadership, specifically principals, being kind of in some way the gatekeeper to uh, you know, uh, you know, pass that information to administration. What I'm asking is that can there actually be surveys that are sent out in the same way that the summer uh that that the survey was sent out a month ago to gauge families' interest in doing a hybrid model or a virtual model? Can we similarly do something maybe at the end of week one, week two, uh, that that just assesses where um for how folks are feeling and where their criticisms or concerns lie?
Week one and week two for a survey, um systemic survey is extremely early in order to get true feedback on the effectiveness of it. But we do have that listed on page seventy-seven in the guide to do the evaluation of our distance learning program, and we will do it multiple times throughout the year.
Great. Yeah, I was, I recognize that I was specifically asking around the timeframe of it just because I would want that to be met earlier rather than too late.
Yeah, so there'll be changes early on um that won't require a survey. Um, but by week two, you, we just don't, we haven't worked out all the kinks. It's almost like we would say around buses. Let us get through the first two weeks and then begin to assess.
I can understand that. Thank you. Um, next question is just in relation to, um, let, let's consider the many families who um have numerous students that will all be under the same roof. Some of them may be even in the same room for their learning. Um, how is that going to, what, what, um, how is that going to work for those students? Is there any plan to provide some kind of headsets along with the technology? Um, and um, yeah, that that is my question.
We've, um, I spoke to Dr. Watts last week and asked him to make a purchase of eighty thousand headphone sets. That's to assist those families um who are doing the Parent Pod system um where they have a, a parent has multiple students, probably different grade levels, and they're really working as a community to support each other. Um, and that came out of a conversation I had with a parent. And that came out of a conversation I had with a parent. And so we're making those purchases. Are we, did we purchase 136,000? No. Many of our kids have air pods that they can utilize, very similar to student member of the board, Jackson. So many kids already have them, but we have made a purchase of 80,000.
Great, yeah, absolutely. I know that so many kids will have the, the resources necessary. The last question is just around meal and drop-offs. I know that we can't do it all and I know that we are doing the best that we can. I just want to acknowledge that 1.5 miles is still a 30-minute walk. And depending on who you are and where you live, what the roads look like, that may be a little bit not accessible for even folks who are within 1.5. So I just wanted to acknowledge that. Not even really a question, just one big question.
Thank you, colleague. Ms. Jackson?
Just two quick questions. I received a lot of comments, emails, you name it, about uniforms and dress expectations for students. And so I was wondering if you could provide guidance around that, especially in regards to the hybrid model when students return.
Yeah, so actually you will see a statement in the August 7th guide around uniforms because I missed the deadline for this Friday. For distance learning, students are not required to wear their uniform, but they are required to adhere to the system-wide dress code. Well, that means don't show up in your bathing suit on Zoom. For the second semester, what we have included in the guide is that it will be a school, we'll leave that up to schools, whether they want to continue. Because of mid-year availability of uniforms. So we all know as parents, elementary students typically can purchase uniforms at the beginning of year and they become, they disappear around Jan-, December, January. So no, at the secondary level, the outfits typically are just khaki and a solid color polo. Maybe easier at the secondary level to go back to the uniform at the hybrid model when we return in person than elementary level. But I included a paragraph in the guide that'll show up August 7th, as I said, because I missed the deadline for this week.
Thank you. The second question being, I know the full, the distance learning model allows for leniency with technology issues. So I was just wondering what that process will look like for students? If, you know, they're have, if they can't access Wi-Fi, if their computer has a glitch or some sort, especially in regards to attendance.
Yep, so they've got to immediately, once that technology device becomes an issue, they've got to let their teacher know. So if it's happens to be third period, they got on first and second, but it's third period now and there's a glitch, they got to tell us. They got to tell the teacher so the teacher can alert someone in the school to say, hey, they're off, they can't get on. This is the issue so we can get some assistance. If by chance it's a Wi-Fi issue, they definitely have to let the principal know because we have purchased hotspots. In order to make sure that families can get on, or if they're a free or reduced meals family, we're paying for their Comcast Essentials bill. Or just the essentials for them to be on Wi-Fi.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson and Dr. Gosson. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you. Really quickly to board colleague Jackson and also welcome to you. I imagine if students are having Wi-Fi problems, it'd be difficult for them to communicate that to the teacher because they don't have Wi-Fi. So I just.
But they could use their phone. They can use their cell phone to contact the school.
So another question, but it's, you know, make sure that, you know, that can, their alternative means of communicating with teachers that go beyond Wi-Fi in the case of emergency. Two quick questions around sports and particularly winter sports. I know you mentioned the fall sports, but think about middle school and high school winter sports. Is there going to be a date for determination of, of how we'll go about doing it at all? And whether we'll potentially move that till, till the spring?
Yeah, part of our winter sports begins during the time that we're in distance learning. So fall and winter are included from that August 31st till January 29th. Winter does overlap into the, into the time that we will return. So we'll have to go back and investigate. Once again, it, it, you know, it's a sports, as much as we want to postpone, you know, I said, I love football and I'm obsessed with sports. But at the same time, our professional organizations are not having the ability to keep their players safe. So I have to keep our kids safe. I understand the need for sports. I am a sports fanatic. But until we feel comfortable that they can be safe, right now they are canceled. We did ask for a postponement. But, you know, we will see if we can revisit that again once we're back in person.
Yeah, and I, I would, I hope we could. And, you know, as we, as we do open up, if there's a way to revise the schedule to ensure that those sports, particularly the winter ones are accommodated. Thank you for moving.
Ms. Boozer Struthers?
Thank you so much and also welcome, Ms. Jackson. So I have two questions. The first is for community schools and actually more broadly, there was an announcement for the annual ear testing and eye testing that was going to be on-site at schools. And of course, we are losing the access to healthcare that, that students have in our system and particularly some of our clinics at the high school level. Can you address if that still will be delivered in some way?
Yeah, we have a memorandum of understanding for a mobile dental and vision program. I actually just reviewed that contract, that MOU, and sent it back and asked them to outline how they would support families now that we're moving to a distance learning model. So it had been presented to me, but it had not taken into account this model. So I've sent it back, waiting for them to respond back on how they can still support us. And when I have that information, we'll disseminate it.
Okay, great, and thank you for the correction on dental. And then I think, you know, something I want to ask you as a leader and as a parent. You know, I think Mr. Swan addressed, you know, the difficulties of managing work from home or work away from home and parenting and, and being your partner to your teacher. And, you know, those of us who are parents experienced this, it was very difficult. And frankly, what got us through to the fourth quarter was the lack of consequences like around grades and attendance helped, right? But the, you know, we are moving to a more structured system. What would you say to the parents right now who are really afraid of return, coming back? Thinking about switching to the homeschooling model? What would you say to them about what, why to stay?
I, I would first ask them to go to our homeschool page. And you'll see that the requirements for homeschool, which are required by the Maryland State Department of Education are extremely stringent. And the workload is such that you'd almost be close to being a certified teacher yourself to deliver homeschooling. Now, I, my hat goes off to those who have the ability to do it. It is a full-time job. So if you feel that the model that we have is not conducive to the environment, the homeschooling component, I think, requires even more time. In this, you do have support in our regular program. You have certified teachers who are providing delivery of instruction through designated times throughout the day. Yes, you do have to assist for primary students, the logging them on and monitoring it, but you're not teaching it. And there are breaks built in, as you'll see in this modified schedule, that allows that student downtime and the parent the opportunity to sign on on their work, in their work zone. Every home is different. And you know how I perceive it might be totally different for another parent. We are supportive of whatever decision they make. As a, as a parent, I personally would not be able to do the homeschooling model to the fidelity that's required by the state and have the work that's required in the portfolio assessment that you have to provide in order for your child to get credit. It would be difficult for me to do.
Thank you, Ms. Boozer Struthers, and, and thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, oh, Mr. Swan. Ms. Queen?
And it's great, yep. And I'll be real quick and, and most of my questions had already been answered by my colleagues. So thank you, colleagues, that was awesome. One thing I did want to ask is, I noticed the plan doesn't really go into it about our facility. So, so through, what's the plan that's going to, for our facilities, the schoolhouse? In terms of maintenance and preventive maintenance during this time while we are doing 100% distant learning? It, has there been any thought to getting some things done in our buildings that we know needs to get fixed? And, and kind of around that, that operational maintenance side of things?
Our custodial staff is in our building working. We have two shifts, a A shift and a B shift to make sure that we don't have cross-contamination of employees for COVID. We are first, one, we've been out of our buildings for a while. So they're doing the summer maintaining that they typically would do and the summer cleaning because they were preparing for us to reopen for hybrid. They're working around the fact that teachers weren't able to fully collapse their classrooms for cleaning. They only came in to get, to get personal items. So they are doing those pieces of the building. And then we will start a plan around upkeep. Once we start past the distribution of materials for the beginning of school.
Thank you. That's, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swan. Ms. Queen?
Hi. Okay, so I have a couple of questions. With going back, how students going to get to know their new classmates? What type of, I would say icebreakers, or maybe I would say COVID breakers that we're going to have? So they can get to know the new classmates and teach, and parents also to get to know the teachers. So that was the first one. Again, I want to say thank you for testing. And then my next question I want you to ask, and I may have time for more. But by district, is there a way we can be transparent? Parents in a community know without, you know, letting them, us know who it is? But just letting people know, let's say for instance, District Six, while school has started, if we get like five or 10 cases within my district. We'd be transparent and just letting them know that this is going on because it may be another way of thinking. Maybe we don't need to come back, you know, to school maybe because this is going on. But is there a way we can kind of like keep an update, not saying per school, but even by district?
Yep, so let me answer the first one. We're hoping that the mock orientation day on Friday, August 28th will be the first opportunity for students to meet their teacher virtually. There may be, you know, we will be distributing materials to students and there'll probably be central office staff and school base to do that. Can't guarantee there'll be teachers, but we will be distributing materials to students to prepare for the opening of school. But the mock orientation day will be the first time that they'll get to see them before the first day. In terms of where the COVID-19 cases are, every day I log into coronavirus.maryland.gov. It gives you the number of cases per county. Also gives you a heat map to tell you where they are based on zip code. I log in every day. It helps to tell me where it's happening and in what areas. And so I strongly encourage members who are interested in that information to, to log onto that site. It's updated every day with new data at 10:00 AM.
Ms. Queen, is that it?
No, no, thank you so very much. I just want to close again. Thank you, Ms. Jackson, for getting on the line with me as the student board member when we had the District Six on COVID. I appreciate you. I'm looking forward to you. I am for the educational roundtable last night and I'm looking forward to you being a part of the town hall we're going to have about the update on Central next week. But I want to close with asking Dr. Gosson, I know we're doing a collection of school supplies. I heard you say earlier about the uniform because I was going to ask that question. I'm glad someone did ask the uniform question. But during school supply? If they can donate and drop-in-a-box headsets, masks, what, what I mean, what other suggestions would you suggest for the school supply drop-off that we all have?
Yeah, so we normally will have a stuff-a-bus, so clearly we won't be able to stuff-a-bus this time. But we are, we just had a conversation again today around how we could galvanize to get backpacks, to put the supplies that we need to distribute to students. So if you know of anyone who's willing to distribute, supply us with some additional backpacks or bags to put the supplies in that we'll be distributing. We are looking for partners to help and assist with that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Queen. And, and thank you, colleagues. Colleagues, I think now a, a motion would be in order to receive, officially receive Dr. Gosson's excellent draft guide with instructions that she would provide to us with weekly updates and continue to receive input from the community. A motion is in order to that effect. And if there's a need for the board to meet again before the 14th, which I don't think there would be, then, then we would also do that. So a motion to receive.
Dr. Gosson's hand up or something? I wasn't sure where the.
I really, at the end, after you all do the motion, I did want to thank a few people.
Oh, yeah, of course.
So, so moved?
It's been properly moved. The second is that the board receives this excellent report from Dr. Gosson with a request, instructions to her to please give the board a, a weekly update as to modifications. And that the board would, if necessary, meet before the 14th, if necessary. I don't think that would be necessary. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, no. Ms. King, let the record reflect that it is unanimous. And Dr. Gosson, before you make your, well, you make your comments and then I want to make.
I'm going to be really brief. There's one other person who knows this plan backward and forward like I do, and that's Dr. Kyra Libby, who was the project manager for this. So I just wanted to thank her. We eat, sleep and breathe this document, but she knows probably even more page numbers than I do. So I wanted to thank her and really the 89-member team. I can't say thank you enough to them because it honestly, it sometimes when I went into the meeting, it was almost as if they were trying to put a square peg in a round hole, trying to make it work. And we're doing their best because they wanted to get students back into school and just could not find a way to do it safely. So I, I just have to say thank you to them.
Thank you very much. And as Chair of the Board, Dr. Gosson, let me also thank you again. I do want to say to my board colleagues though, thank you all for the collegial leadership that you all are providing. And these times, as you know, the community looks to us for leadership, for transparent, collegial, respectful leadership. And I think there's one thing that we can all agree that we are providing that in this very, very difficult space. I think this evening's set of questions, the responses that you've given to Dr. Gosson indicates that. In fact, I would go so far as to say that what we're doing is a national model of decision-making. And I would want us to please build on that. It is an example of working with, an exemplar, Chief Executive Officer with board leadership. So the contributions that each of you is making individually and collectively, let's not take it for granted. This is a difficult thing that we're doing and we're doing it together. I think the people of Prince George's County are respecting us for it. I am just elated as Chair to get the reception from our elected officials at all levels for the work of this Board of Education. So I want to thank you all for that. I will be drafting a letter that I will send out to you for your endorsement regarding some of the broader issues that will affect the success of our plan. Rent stabilization questions that will affect our parents and our students. State and local funding issues that will affect our budget. We're going to have to have some very tough decisions come November, December. And so I want to give a voice to that from this board with your support. So as Chair, you know, you must know how appreciative I am of what you all are doing as colleagues. So please, let's, let's keep it up. Thanks, everyone. A motion to adjourn the meeting is now in order.
So moved.
Second.
Proper move to second it. Those in favor, please say aye. Those opposing, no. The ayes, have it. Please be safe, mask up and distance for some. Take care. Bye-bye.